Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this special meeting to order, May 13th, 6 o'clock. We'll start with the roll call.
Councilmember Rockwell?
Here.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
Mayor Blankley?
Here.
Six present.
Sorry, excuse me one second. Okay, I'd like to ask if there's any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, then moving on to 2.1, which is the annual presentation from the Gilroy Gardens Board. I think Jane Howard is going to start this off. So, good evening, Mayor. Jimmy, councilmembers?
It's a delight to be here tonight, representing the Board of Directors, and we're so pleased to have our Wa, our general manager, and the staff, ready to share with you the incredible results of our 2023 year and what we have planned for '24. And, you know, we don't, we haven't had this opportunity to do this for a number of years. You know, after COVID, things just didn't get back into this regular annual report. So now we're doing it, and we're really, really happy about doing that. So thank you for this opportunity, and we thank you for your time for this study session. So I'd like to introduce to you our board that is here. Unfortunately, our board chair, Greg Edgar, and two of our board members, Steve Pete and Rob Anetto, had other commitments tonight, so they are not here. But we are pleased to have Jay Backs up, who's our board treasurer, and the city administrator from way back when. I shouldn't say it that way, should I say? No. Dan Harney, who is our community director, and Frank Johnson, who's our business Gilroy executive director, and then Carol Marks, of course, who's your city council rep. And I serve as the secretary for the Gilroy Gardens Board of Directors. So with that, tonight, I'm going to introduce Wa Li Wa, who's our general manager. He's going to kind of lead the presentation and have his staff come up on specific areas of responsibility. We'll have some open to questions and then hear what's next in terms of what, how we want to proceed in terms of our gardens and the 536. Okay?
Thank you, Jane. Good evening, Mayor Blankley, councilmember. My name is Wa, I'm the president and general manager at Gilroy Gardens, and we are pleased to be here to present our park updates today. First, I'd like to thank the Gilroy Garden Board of Director for the continued support of the gardens and the staff. They are a dedicated, caring, and knowledgeable group of individuals that I've been privileged to work with for the last 20 years at the park. So let's dive right in. To coin the phrase from Cedar Fair, fun is, to us, a very serious business. Not a lot of people get to say that about their job, we're like that. So let's dive right into the last 21 years' figures that we have produced. So we have entertained over 8.5 million guests in the last 21 years, over an average of 400,000 a year, produced a total revenue of $273 million, 13 million on average per year, and a total EBITDA of over $21 million. That's an average of 7.69 net margin. Industry key performance indicator for us as a smaller regional theme park should be around 5% to 7%. And we've been averaging about seven, low over 7% in the last 21 years. We have data from 2002, just want to point out, to now, but we don't have the first year they opened, and also there's a shutdown year of 2020, that's why you see 21 instead of 23 years. Next, we want to go through our capital investment and assets management. We have, our most significant investment has been in capital increasing the gate and stabilizing our business. We've invested over $11 million in capital product and event programming over the years. Second, we spent almost $6 million to protect the park infrastructure system, thus buildings, landscape, irrigating system, legislative brides maintenance. And finally, we have made over $2.1 million in EBITDA payment to the city in the time period, per our lease agreement, 10% of EBITDA. Next, I have two graphs that I prepare. I separate them to look at two different, I like to separate them by looking at before COVID, 18 years, and then after COVID, what we've done. As you can see, in the 18 years before COVID, the business cycles is consistent with the industry trends, with five years up, five years down. If you look at the COVID to now, it paints certainly a different picture in many aspects. We were shut down in 2020, restart in May of 2021. Navigating the business after COVID shutdown presented numerous challenges for many businesses around the country, more so for us, because during that same time period, Cedar Fair decided that they needed to focus their own property and have severed the contract with us. The timing of the separation from Cedar Fair presented significantly more challenges for us, as we had to restart the business during COVID while separating our two systems, creating all new system for on-gate, front gate, online, and financial infrastructure operating system in the park. Because we were so intertwined with Cedar Fair for so many years, separating them and creating our new system posed the most challenging aspect of our business that we had to deal with since the park opened in 2003. Made even more challenging because at the same time, we were navigating opening parks through numerous state and county COVID regulations at that time. Although we made significant progress in the last three years, separating and updating our system from Cedar Fair, it will take another year or two to complete this process and to get our system to where we want it to be. From a business aspect, we have recovered. Our revenue and our attendance have surpassed our expectation the last three years, allowing us to continue to build and create products and event stability for the business. The last thing I would like to point out are the new challenges for most businesses after COVID, especially ones in California, dealing with on top of high inflation, cost of goods. We're also dealing with accelerated expenses that put considerable strain on earnings and profit, like wages, utility, and insurance. For us, at least, those three categories have significantly increased over the past three years of our business. Next, I'd like to read through some community impact figures that I'm really proud of for the park. Since 2010, we have welcomed over 75,000 Gilroyan to our first day of each year that we opened for the Gilroy Appreciation Day. We have had over 36,000 Gilroy visit on special resident deep discount days in 2010. And the program we're really proud of called Gilroy Reads, we have welcomed over 7,600 kids since 2003. In this program, we're really proud, we're going to expand this, we work with the library. The message that we want to send out is no child in Gilroy should ever have to pay for a ticket to go to Gilroy Gardens. They can read their way through as many tickets as they want. And that's a great program we have with the library, and we want to really expand on that. We have over 64,000 members in our membership, up with 7% roughly are Gilroian. More than 93% of our visitor originate outside of Gilroy and are driven by tourism. Over 12,600 seasonal jobs in Gilroy, averaging about 600 a year. From our EPS 2019 Economic Impact Study, estimated offsite spending in the city is around $2 million a year. Over 22,000 GUSU Natural Science Days visits since 2005, and over 7,000 GUSD student community service hours have been at 2000, since 2013. And this is, we're working really tight with GUSD because we want more and more kids to be able to get their community service hours through the park if they want to. And a really impressive number of over 217,000 community volunteer hours through our docent program at the park since 2003, that's over 3,100 docents at the park, and many of whom are residents of Gilroy, of course. Now let's look at our 2023 results specifically. I like to keep some industry key markers. So we're a smaller regional park, so I'm comparing us to the large, the largest three players in the, in the country, regional parks. They are Cedar Fair, SeaWorld, Six Flags. So if you look at their final result for '23, Cedar Fair was slightly down, less than a percent, holding their per cap at 61.66, with their profit margins holding at 6.96. SeaWorld attendance is down 1.5%, with per cap at 78.87, with their profit margin at 13.53. Pretty impressive there. Six Flags was up 9%, but they traded off with obviously a lot of cheaper tickets, even though they're holding their per cap at 69.93. You look, their profit margin fell down to 2.73% for the 2023 results. Couple that with our Gilroy Gardens, last, last year, we had a really good year. Attendance is up 12 and 9, over 12%. Our per cap is holding at 43.21, with a profit margin of 7.69. Some notable stuff for our 2023 results. Last year, our attendance, we had the largest year-to-year attendance growth since Illumination and Oasis product that we put in. We have the highest Halloween attendance in the park history. We also achieved the highest holiday attendance in the park history with good weather last year. Membership was our fourth year, and last year was our fourth consecutive year of revenue growth in total season pass revenue. This year, we project to have the highest season pass revenue growth in five years at 19.38% for 2024. Revenue and per capita, this is the first year we surpassed $20 million overall revenue since we opened, strongest per capita growth in 2024, 43.21. Where do we go from here? Our strategic three years is to grow our attendance to 550,000 by 2027, to deal with mitigating the costs and accelerating expenses, gradually increase our upper-aged child to user of 12 and older, add a guest experience outside of the traditional theme park offering, and something that we start in '23 that I'd like Jane to kind of expand on is maintain a mission-driven 501(c)(3) experimental learning with our nonprofit arm, Horror Culture and Climate Education. So we already started that arm in 2023. Jane, you want to just expand on it just a little bit? Thank you.
So most of you know we are 501(c)(3), that's how we were founded. And the park has obviously been driven by more getting gate attendance and not really looking at the actual mission, which is to have education. So after I retired from visiting Gilroy, the board asked if I would be the liaison to establish a community education component that we were there, we would look at adding additional board members that would specifically address how we would build that foundation. And we were moving along in that. We have it on hold right now because you were going through your negotiations, and so we'll wait for direction about getting that restarted. But it's an avenue of bringing sponsors into the park in a new way, and they would be sponsoring the specific types of programs that you might see at a Monterey Bay Aquarium is not a good example because they have so many sponsors already, but maybe like a Happy Hollow or Roaring Camp, and build on that so that you're not putting all your emphasis on, at the gate, bringing, selling tickets. So that's how we would gradually get these numbers up, and then also with revenue.
Next, I'm going to hand it over to our senior staff member at Gilroy to go through our 2024, our exciting strategy.
Thank you, Wa. Hello, everyone. My name is Alex. I'm the vice president of operations and assistant general manager for Gilroy Gardens, and I'm going to go over some targets and initiatives for 2024. Our attendance targets, our attendant target for this year is 485,000 visitors, and this represents an increase of 25,000 over prior year, and our total budget revenue of 21 million, as well as an EBITDA of 1.152, with a margin of 5.28. This is still in line with our KPI between 5 to 7%, and overall, an increase of 1.9 million in expenses. As Wa mentioned earlier, this is primary through wages, utilities, and insurance costs. And the mitigations we have in place, starting with price increases for our memberships, food, merchandise, and games, new inventory system to pinpoint spikes in waste and cost of sales by location, as well as cashless operation to reduce potential theft and enhance the speed of service for improved guest experience. We also have transparent pricing online, as well as enhanced benefits that will drive admissions revenue. Moving on to the initiatives for 2024, value propositions to increase season pass, sales through a new product like Lakeside Splash that is opening this Memorial Day weekend. In addition, we will continue to host unique cultural events and holiday promotions to attract new guests and drive repeat visitations from our members. And finally, refine our guest service initiatives and implementing staff recognition programs to enhance the level of service provided throughout the park. And now I'm going to hand this off to Michael to go over marketing.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening. My name is Michael Fulcher. I'm the director of marketing and operations at Gilroy Gardens, and I want to go through the key points of our marketing review for 2023 with you. So starting with our attendance, you can see a growth trend here under the attendance column, especially after COVID, in the green there. Our attendance has increased since the 2020 year, with our biggest increase coming from the 2022 to 2023, an increase of 50,000, which consisted of the introduction of our Fantastical Flowers event in the spring and our North Pole Nights event that we launched for the first time in December. Also to note here, you can see through the years, our per cap is steadily rising. That's reflective of our aggressive pricing strategy to keep up with some of the externalities that Alex and Wa have mentioned, but in order to do that, we have to preserve the price integrity of our ticket by doing value-added strategies to the park and what the park's offering with a single-day ticket. A little bit about our audience, we want to talk about what we understand about our audience, and we break it up into the generations here with, of course, the boomer generation being between the ages of 60 to 96, our Gen X generation, 44 to 59 years of age, our millennials, which are 28 to 43 years of age, and now starting to enter the park as parents, the Gen Zs, ages, the youngest being 13 currently, but going all the way up to 27. And of our audience, about, we find 6% of the boomer age, what we consider the grandparents taking the kids out. A bulk of our attendance comes from the Gen X and the millennials, not a surprise there. Those are the bulk of the family generating years right now, but we are seeing that gradual pickup of Gen Z coming in now as new parents. And what we understand about these, these groups in general, the boomers are definitely favor generational experiences, togetherness, and time with kids and grandkids is their priority. With the Gen Xers, we know that their kids' education has been a priority. That's been a pinnacle of the park's success over the last 20 years, and that fun and education, when we mix them, that's very dynamic for, for us and rewarding for the guest. Our millennials, we know that they're driven by experiential for kids and family, they're all about the experience, the out-of-home experience. We also know that they're one of, they're the first of a generation that really brand trust through word of mouth, but from a social media standpoint and that digital standpoint. So they're relying on word of mouth that they see online before making the visit. And then with the Gen Z, they are the first fully digital native generation, so their experiences in general must be capturable and resonate online, i.e. trendy, they must be able to post about it. And we also know that from recent market studies, they're also, there's a taste of, they're businesses that they frequent or have a moral or a value-driven proposition. Lessons that we learned from our industry in 2023, echoing what Wa ran through with us, we know that the industry in general struggled to grow both attendance and revenue simultaneously. You saw that, they were either trading off with their margin or a pickup of attendance. So, and we believe this is a result of consumers becoming more selective of where they're going to spend their dollar. Even though there's a continuous rise of overall spending that we saw in 2023, they are being more selective about where they're going to choose to spend that dollar. Gilroy Gardens, we saw similar trends that reflected that, as well as some others. We saw pickup, definitely, we leaned a little bit into promotions last year during the summer, especially tickets surrounding holiday weekends with family visiting out of town, or our promotions would surround holiday weekends. We saw a strong pickup in the fall and winter. This was event-based through the North Pole Nights, but we were also fortunate to have a very favorable weather in the, in the winter, so not so many rain effects. We were able to finish 2023 with a 50,000 increase in attendance and a $1.2 million increase in our admission revenue. So for 2024, we want to continue to capitalize on these trends, adjusting our attendance strategy to capture the demand, but again, without compromising the price integrity of our product. That's critical with our pricing strategy. So what does our guests want, and definitely reflective from what I just ran through with the generations, in overall, meaningful experiences. The park definitely serves as a place to escape stress and for parents to escape that screen time with their kids that are always glued to that screen. So we, our aim is to provide that out-of-home, value-driven outing. Some trends that the industry is taking advantage of, that we want to lean into and are currently making headway in doing so, immersive experiences with technology. So oddly enough, to escape the screen time, they still want some sort of technology support or interface. IP activations that resonate with children. And notable examples for us is our Great Big Boo Halloween event, always been very successful. So whatever intellectual property that you can activate that resonates with children. And then eco attractions are seeing a pickup in the industry, and that's something that Gilroy Gardens is well poised to take advantage of. Where we find success to leverage these trends and align with our market demands, especially with the millennial and the growing Gen Z, targeting channels across social media, we've seen a big pickup in our Instagram engagement, for example. We've tripled our followers in the last two years, which is impressive to be able to do that. And we focus on enhanced content creation, capturing those capturable moments and the trendy moments. We then are able to use robust ad targeting initiatives to find new qualified users, and AI listening tools also help us gauge our customer sentiment. So with all that combined, we can leverage that and effectively communicate the value of a visit to even a prospective audience. And then looking at our membership strategy, similar here, painting in the green since post-COVID, you will actually see under passes sold, that number is steadily declining, yet on the average price, you see that we're able to drive, keep driving that average price up. What we believe, we know here is that we're further qualifying our users, qualifying our member base, especially after 2020, or in 2021, when spending was at an all-time high. Essentially, of that 75,000, you had people who were buying the membership because they could, or maybe I'll visit, maybe I won't. And as we progress through the years, we're getting true users of the park. And the other indicator that we know is that average price, bringing it from $66 in 2021 all the way up to this year of 104 of an average price, we're still growing the revenue line. So we are targeting a pickup of 2,000 units from our prior year. So again, qualifying the member base and establishing true users of the park, focusing on delivering, again, that value-added experience to owning a membership, keeping the price integrity of the product. And reflective of that, this year, we've introduced the all-new Value Plus Pass, which is a more beneficial version of our old Value Pass. It now includes free parking and in-park discounts. And then our Premium Pass, our top-tier pass, we've added more benefits to that as well, again, adding benefit to the products. So I'll now pass it off to Sandy Lay, our director of revenue.
Awesome. Really tall here. Thank you, Michael, Mayor, councilmembers. So before we kind of dive in what 2023 did and what we're going to bring into 2024, I wanted to take a look at the per cap progression within the revenue division, and revenue is food, merch, and games within Gilroy Gardens. So as you can see here, in 2018, that was our installation of Water Oasis 2. We did 457 in attendance with a food per cap of 9.24, merch at 3.04, and games at 62 cents. Fast forward to 2019, we did 410 with 9.82 in food and merch at 3.12 and games holding at 55. I did skip over the year of 2021, but that's just because the whole industry won, so those numbers are a little bit skewed. And then we got into 2022, we did kind of the same attendance as 2019, with per cap now holding at over a $12 per cap for food and a 3.24 for merch and games at 66 cents. For 2023, again, Michael mentioned that we did have the highest pickup of attendance. We did 460 with foods at 12.59, merch at 3.02, and games at 74 cents. So for 2024, we want to raise food up to 12.75 in per capita and merch at a 3.15, and we're going to hold games, just because games holds about 3% of the revenue division. So we're going to focus on the bread and butter, so to say. So let's take a look at where the industry is going. So from food and beverage, merchandise, and games, we're seeing the tailwind of post-pandemic spending. You know, you're starting to see that people don't have those government programs anymore, they just don't have those dollars in their pocket to be spending, and we're going to see that 2024 is going to come at a more muted pace of growth versus 2023. I want to point out the 2024 food trends, right? Within food and beverage and merchandise and games, we're always trying to stay trendy with the millennials, with the Gen Z. So for food and beverage, quote-unquote, this is not news to anybody, but the phone always eats first. And what does that mean? It's the social arena, that's the new arena for marketing in terms of food and beverage. So they're seeing where their friends are eating, they're seeing something that's Instagram-worthy. The food, as long as it looks good, right? It doesn't have to taste good, but they'll go and try, and they'll seek out, seek out those experiences. And then you'll see sustainability echo. We're starting to see it with the Gen Z, the millennials, but that's really going to echo within the revenue division. And then there's health-conscious beverages within food and beverage, where guests are now not only wanting something that tastes good, but they want something that's good for their bodies. So you're seeing the kombucha, the fermentation, something with probiotics, something with prebiotics. So that's what they're looking for, and we're going to try to adapt to that. And then there's the global flavor fusion, where we want it in our own backyards, right? That is their stay vacation. So when they come to Gilroy Gardens, it's an avenue of, hey, make a curry burger during the DiWali event. So they want to be able to taste these flavors throughout the world, within Gilroy Gardens or within any attraction. And then, not news to us, AI expansion. The AI expansion is a big boon from ChatGPT being able to now curate menus for you, where you put in ingredients and telling them, oh, I want to make this product, and it comes up one for you. And we see that with technology, right? What Michael says with the immersive experiences within the park, but they want to see that within food and beverage as well. Moving on to merchandise and games, again, there's sustainability. So they're, they're looking now for less plastic toys, what is that going to impact on the environment? And then you have the tech versus classic toys. So that's kind of contradiction of each other, but it's tech boom, right? So you're, they're playing with toys that are STEM-approved, that is educational, but then there's the mom and dad who are the millennials, the Gen Z, right? Who are looking at the Barbie, from the Barbie movie last year, from Hot Wheels and all of those Lego products. So that's still, both of those categories are going to be on trend. And then teaching and emotional toys, so things that are going to be STEM-approved, things that they are, that's interactive, right? To get them away from that screen time, but it's also teaching them something, where it's helpful for their anxiety, push poppets, right? Those type of tools that's within the toys. All right, so we'll go into the outlook. So for food and beverage, we'll start off with that. We're still seeing that profitability is going to be a challenge, and that's because food costs have risen more than 20% since 2019. And, you know, we're also seeing that the rising costs in wages, that's really going to eat into the bottom line. And what Alex said is we do have that new inventory system where it's Yellow Dog, and then that's really going to help us zone in on those locations that have a high cost, so we can help that. And we want to continue to replicate the successes of what we call quote-unquote "eater-tainment", where we don't want them to just eat their food, we want them to play with it too, and within our own IP. So that's from our Fantastical Flowers event, from our Water Oasis, Lakeside Splash, which we're so excited to be opening up a smokehouse, so you'll get, you know, fresh smoked tri-tip, you'll get sausage. So we're really excited. And then the Great Big Boo, that's a, you know, an IP that came from nowhere, and we made it something. So we're really excited for that. And then there's North Pole Nights, which did tremendously well last year. And then we're going to zone in on that sustainability and the global flavor fusions to our seasonal menu changes. And then, of course, we're in, we're in Gilroy, we've got to have some garlic items, and we started that last year with our Gilroy Garlic Funnel Cake. So if you're ever there, I recommend you try it. Might not finish the whole thing, but please do try it. Then within 20, then within merchandise and games, what we saw in 2023 was that we had a decline of toy sales of 8%, and that's due to, you know, we're competing with toy subscription boxes. So for those of you who, who don't know what that is, is that the millennials and the Gen Z, after the boom of, you know, 2020, everybody was at home, it was the convenience of ordering a curated box that, of toys that's for your child that gets sent to you every month. So we're kind of competing with that, and the only two companies that really won that we saw was Mattel and Disney, and that's because they have those strong IPs. We're expecting to see further spending decline in 2024, but we're really excited for growth to return in 2025, and that's only because, you know, you've seen the bulk of our attendance was the millennials of 56%, and we're seeing the tech layoffs. We're seeing depleted savings, credit card debt, and then also the return of student debt programs, or, you know, in August. So that's really going to affect our core, core audience, so spending decline. And then there's Disney and Sanrio. So Sanrio is the boom, is the Hello Kitty, I'm sure you guys have seen it in the market. And Disney, as though they can't get any more bigger, they're now, we're now having issues with our manufacturers where we can't secure Disney products because it's only solely through Disney. But I'm very excited that we are now trying to curate our own custom GG products with our Gil and Roy plush, but then also our seasonal IP events, I'm really excited. Bouncing off of that, we have Wolfgang the Werewolf, so we've made a plush, a custom plush with that, and we're going to really bundle that to add to plush with that, and we're going to really bundle that to add to that value-driven purchase. And then educational toys and more hands-on approach to retail sales. So instead of just putting it on the wall, we want them to be able to play with it before they can buy it, and we want things that are going to be educational STEM-approved robots. So we have all of those things at Gilroy Gardens now currently. And then the other sector of my job as the Director of Revenue and Group Sales, we're looking at, from an industry standpoint, so within theme park industry, group sales is going to be one of the growth factors, one of the categories that will grow this year. And it's still going to be a ways to go to get back to those pre-pandemic numbers, but we're really excited that that's an area of growth and a focus that I'll be doing for this year. In 2023, we had a record-breaking group sales attendance of 20,000, and that was the highest attendance in the past 10 years without ticket programs. There was no ticket programs in the market. It was solar through catered events. So corporate companies coming out, field trips that did, you know, a lunch with us. And of those, we want to continue to grow those catered events, but we're also growing our proms. We're doing very large proms now as the venue to go to because we're so unique, where, you know, that memorable night, you can get churros and cotton candy, you can hop on some rides. Not only makes us revenue, but makes them memories as well. And then I'm really excited to relaunch ticket programs within the market, so being able to work with the hotels, put more, you know, heads in beds, and being able to work with the local corporate companies, and also expanding out within our 50-mile radius. And that's it. Bring back Wa.
Well, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, and I wanted to, it was exciting to see all the director and what, how passionate they are about fun and all the data that we have to dig into to be able to make this business work. So I'm here ready to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. I can go to council or I can go to the public first. What's preference, public?
No public speakers at this time.
No public speakers, okay. Then closing public comment and coming back to council. Okay, I'll start on this end and go down. Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, well, and the Board of Directors, I just wanted to say that your team is pretty impressive.
Thank you, sir.
And I've been involved with the park for years, and it's impressive.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Arminderis, do you have anything?
Sure. Just a couple of questions, but also I have to second that, like the numbers and, you know, the activity and attention and online presence of Gilroy Gardens is just, you know, over the past couple of years has just been really astounding and makes me really proud. I invite everybody I know to come here and, you know, visit and bring their kids and grandparents and such.
Thank you.
But my question is about children with special needs. Do we have inclusive activities or interactive experiences or days that are geared just for those, for families with children with special needs?
We do have an onboarding process that's special for that. We are, it's a process to go through that, but we are working towards getting certified for certain section of that. But that is a goal for the park, but we currently do not have special needs stuff.
And the playground, anything, none of it?
It has special condition in there, but we don't have exclusive yet.
So there's a certification process that you have to get there?
Correct. But they, we do have a, like, if you have kids that can't wait in line, something like that, we do have a special boarding pass that allows the family to skip that or with certain condition, yes, that we can cater to that.
How do, how are families made aware of those?
It is online. Also, what they, they know to go straight to the welcome center when they get there to get their boarding pass.
Okay. And then what's the timeline for the certification, do you know?
That's at least six months a year, from what I believe, to get, to get something like that going, but it's something...
It's been initiated already?
Not yet, which has been talking, because we're learning from some other parks that's doing it, but it's something that we do want to strive for, but it is a process.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes, I've been on the board since 2020, I believe, and I'm just so proud of Gilroy Gardens because every year, Wa and the group is always, are always seeking what more they can do, what more, how can they bring in more people, what can they do to improve the park? And it's always an upward mobility with them. And, you know, Wa didn't mention New Year's Eve. They have a great family New Year's Eve party where it was amazing this past year to see all the families and little children staying up past midnight, a wonderful fireworks show that happens. And it's just, it's just a fun board to be on, to just keep thinking of all the, you know, listening to all the novel things that they're coming up with every single year. And their motto seems to be, what can we do better? What can we do more? How do we make it more pleasurable for the citizens? So great job to all of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I, too, would like to say just how, in knowing some of the staff and getting to know them, and it is a quality staff. We're very fortunate to, you're very fortunate to have this staff team together, working, and you're working hard, I see that. It's evident, you know, but also interacting with them too and getting, getting to hear their passions about the park. It's a really good thing to have from that standpoint. The term price integrity, is the definition of that, keeping it affordable? When we talk about price integrity, what's?
Price integrity is a twofold definition. One is keeping, trying to separate the two audience. So they dive a lot into the data to understand what audience, so it's almost like keeping different silo. You have the affordability market. We expanded that when we do the payment plan, but there's also risks when you do that because the default rate goes up. So we are trying to keep a different silo in the market that you can get to affordability. But ultimately, we always drive them to price integrity. I mean, this is maybe a little bit more expensive you're paying, but you're getting the best for the value that you're getting.
Bigger bang for your buck.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's good. How are your passes for 2024 trending? I mean, are you, percentage-wise, how much, are you pre-selling before you open, and how's that?
It started out strong. Unfortunate part for the industry, for all of us, it rained almost 55% of all the rain days of spring, so the data is a little convoluted. I think by summer, we'll see where it's going. But so far, prior to the rain issue, we continue to sell more as we continue to up our pricing, meaning the core audience of our premium member, they believe there is a value that we're offering, and that's why in the last three years, we continue to sell more. But hopefully, hopefully, we'll see where the data is going after all this rain go away for us.
And obviously, you have everything in place as far as tracking that.
Absolutely.
Obviously, so that's good. You talked about spending decline, and you kind of expect spending decline in 2024 by the patrons, but you expect growth in 2025. So I guess, how do you manage that?
Very good question in this industry. We have something where we call different reaction that we do. So if it rained, that we do like, you know, buy one, get one free, or we do different special for holidays that will drive the revenue, that will probably lower the price integrity, but then you will win in an overall volume. That's, we're heading into a new product in the summer, and hopefully we'll have good weather. But it's always a tricky thing to make sure that you react in time in this industry. But the, so far the data, it's hard to see because the day, usually you can see the first quarter for the industry, you can see the data, but then everyone's blaming rain. So once that's cleared away, I think, but I still think the economy is going to be a little tricky this year, because when you, I was joking, because I was talking about, you know, when you wake up and you get a text from Starbucks during a buy-one-get-one-free Monday to Wednesday, and McDonald's saying they're going to do a $5 meal, then, you know, those big guys know their data. So then we have to be on our feet to get ready with specials that we're going to go on the market if the summer doesn't go, where are we going to go?
So you're just getting yourself ready?
Yeah, absolutely. Constantly in this industry.
We'll let the others ask questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar?
Good morning, Wa. I've had the pleasure of knowing you for 15 years now, so I appreciate the work, and every time I call you, you answer and you answer my questions. I appreciate that. And to the board, great job. I mean, it's impressive. I'm actually jealous, I thought my PowerPoints were good, but this is way above. And your staff, I mean, just good to hear, I mean, the information that you shared with us. I think the community needs to hear it as well, and I appreciate that. A couple of things. First of all, thank you for doing the, for saying that your goal is for every kid in Gilroy not to have to, if they can't afford it, not to pay it, and I think that's a wonderful program that you do. Do you know, maybe I missed it, do you know for those individuals that if it's a promotion or ticket giveaways, how much the per individual or family spends while they're there?
Well, if you take it overall, per capita spend is about 43, but that's encompass of all the ticketing and in-park. Ironically, that's a good question. As we see decline in, part of Tom's question, as we see the decline in the outer market, but our in-park spending has been pretty strong. Usually, it's in the same path, but it's kind of adjacent now that even though we can see the decline, but like I said, it could be weather, but our in-park spending is still holding pretty strong.
Yeah, and that's good.
So overall, spending is not as bad.
No, but it's good to know that because, again, you know, giving away, taking doesn't necessarily mean you're losing money, you're actually gaining money from what people spend, right? So, and then going back to the jobs that we mentioned about the cashless, you know, I mean, in technology, right? And the number of jobs annually is about 600. With the, with high tech and all that, do you see that that's going to be where maybe these jobs that are really geared for the younger generation?
Oh, absolutely. I think we are the leader in creating my first work experience, and I think we take pride in teaching them how to hold down a job, you know, show up on time and have integrity in their stuff. So we develop high school kids into college, and that's what we, we're good at, at that. We can deal with all the high school kids.
And I'm impressed with the number of community service hours that you guys have done over the years. And when I was on the school board, I pushed for that, I yelled at for doing that, but it's great to see our kids are out there doing that, so I appreciate that. In regards to kind of looking at memberships and growth and stuff, and I know you guys do a wonderful job, but do you have partnerships with like, well, as you know, the sounds of Sharts, Amazon, Google, you know, the community college, the local universities? A lot of these, obviously, Gilroy Gardens may not be, you know, what they're looking for, but a lot of them do have kids, right? So I'm not sure if you guys have programs or partnerships with universities and colleges and kind of just to get the word out there and promote it even more.
We have cross-promotion, but we don't have a program with them, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Okay. To me, the gardens has always been about fun. It's always been fun, even when it was Bonfoni Gardens, and those are the days when we received some pass holders, because my kids are too old now, but I still have Bonfoni Gardens merch, you know, in my house. So thank you for the presentation. Keep the fun going.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Do you have another?
I came up with one more.
Go ahead.
Real quick. In your growth projections with lower margins, what is your plan for addressing your deferred maintenance issues you're, you know, confronted with? Because naturally, it's an aging park. You have to consider that, but I know with the revenue, you've got so many balls in the air.
We worked out with the board, we have a standard half a million that we commit each year to doing, but obviously, the more money we make, the board's always been, say, put more. What's driving us in the way we look at plant integrity is obviously anything that's legislative, like ride maintenance, anything that's immediate, we have to prepare that first, and then we go to the irrigation and the building infrastructure. So we put it into different category, and we put, what is the most immediate needs? That safety for the guests, and then it moves its way down. And then we always aim to do more than half a million a year, but it all depends on, again, the revenue that we bring in each year.
And like ADA issues as codes change?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And progress, you've got to address those too, like you said.
Absolutely.
It's mandated, so.
Because it's outdated, and it will take a process. Yes.
Councilmember Tovar, are you raising your hand?
Yeah. Wa, do another question. So, you know, you guys talked about kind of diversifying your options, kind of targeted all age groups, right? When you look at, how do you project that, where's that funding going to come from, right? When you look at kind of moving the different experiences, right, where obviously it can be costly?
Absolutely. When the park was built, it's built for 10 and under. The model that should have been built is 12 and under, which followed the Legoland model. That, beside the proximity where the park is, the restrictive of 10 and under is extraordinary hard to compete in the market. So what we started doing is create what we consider our version of immersive experience that can get the family out, and we were really, really successful with Halloween and then holiday. So we're working towards the basis of that family event, because, you know, in this industry, you grow in two ways. Either you build a large capital, like, you know, a big roller coaster or a whole area, or you build family events, and we will take the learning that what we have successfully done with Halloween, create that event base that can grow, that have multiple family units that can enjoy the event, not just for a 10 and under. And that's where, how we would project to grow forward, but how to get to 550 by 2027, is those type of family events. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this side? I see a public comment, but I thought we, for the next item. Okay, okay, very good. All right. Jane, did you have something else?
I do.
Okay.
So I just want to say on behalf of the Board of Directors, thank you. You know, you just got Theme Park 101 class here to see this kind of information. That's why we get so excited at the board level to, because we're, you know, we get to see this team in action. I don't know, yesterday I was out at the Mother's Day tea. You know, you just, if you want something good for your soul, you go out there and sometimes just sit in the park, having something nice cold to drink, and watch the smiles. And that's what we're contributing in this world of chaos. So celebrate that. So want to let you know, and you will all receive an invitation, to our Lakeside Splash ribbon cutting that the Chamber will be co-hosting with the gardens, and that's on May 24th. So more details to come, so you want to check that new investment that we just made. And then also, we really, as a board, as a team, we want to say, let's keep our communication lines open so we can constantly share this kind of information. You're ambassadors for the garden, as you know, and, you know, Visit California, they're constantly saying that Gilroy Gardens is the hidden gem of the Central Coast. Share that with everybody. This is a big deal to be proud of. So again, thank you for this opportunity.
Okay. All right, then, moving on to, sorry, moving on to 2.2, which is report on Gilroy Gardens' annual lease payments. Who's doing that report?
Just, would you like just a moment on the information on the lease, Jimmy? On the EBITDA payments? Okay, perfect. All, the slide here is essentially talking about the financials, the 10% EBITDA payments that the...
There's nothing on the screens.
Oh.
Why don't we just pivot and do it verbally?
Sure.
Everybody gets the concept, so just go through the years.
Sure. I'll go ahead and I'll just give a little bit of background. So the city obviously procured, as everyone is aware, in 2007, Gilroy Gardens approached the city to, with a proposal to purchase the theme park. In 2008, city did exactly that, purchased the park using inter-fund loans for about $13.7 million and leased it back to the Gilroy Gardens for a single tenant lease agreement. And the agreement also requires the city receiving 10% of the EBITDA of the earnings from the Gilroy Gardens. So from 2008 up until 2023, the city has renewed the single tenant lease agreement in one-year increments, along with other minor operating adjustments and such. So just a quick note on the inter-fund loan status. Since 2008, the inter-fund loan has been repaid back to the various fund sources. The balance projected at June 30, 2024 will be $3.3 million, and it is expected to be fully repaid back by 2028. And as far as the financials, the 10% EBITDA payment the city has received since 2008, ranging, again, from $0 from the COVID year, up to as high as $430,000. So since 2008 through fiscal year '23, the city has received $2.1 million, equal to the 10% of the EBITDA payment. So that concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions. So that concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Harjo. Council members?
Yeah, could you elaborate on what EBITDA, like what factors EBITDA contains?
Sure, the EBITDA is basically earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation and amortization. It is a non-GAAP metric used to assess a company's operating performance. So kind of excluding all the tax and the capital investments and the financing decisions the entity's made. So that way you're kind of measuring the operations of one certain business, two other businesses in the industry alike. So essentially you're backing up some of the adjustments.
I, I'll go then with a question. We've received 2.1 million in total.
In total, yes.
Right, cumulatively from the very beginning of time. For the loan that was used to purchase the park in 2008, the 13.7 million, you said that today, which is 10, 14 years later, right? 14 years later, no, 16 years later. Since 2008, down to 3 million, right? That's what the balance is now?
Yeah.
What money has been used to pay that back?
Public Facilities Impact Fund. So that was the original funding source identified. So over the years, as the fund accumulates revenues, it pays back, pays back the, the loan to the other funds.
Right, and that money comes from not the gardens?
That's correct. The EBITDA payment is a revenue that's deposited to the general fund.
No, no. The payments that are make, that are paying down that loan?
Right.
That's coming from?
The Public Facilities Impact.
And those impact fees are paid by developers?
By developments.
Exactly, by developments.
That's correct.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Other question?
Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, and maybe this is for, I mean, for all of us, our city manager even you as well.
Sure.
Looking at, you mentioned, and I, I kind of know the history, but maybe to educate the community, why we only do a one year lease? You know, it seems like that's what we do every year is a one year lease.
Yeah, I believe it's other legal and taxation ramifications that's recommended that we do one year at, at a time. And Jimmy, you may have more background on that?
Two words, property tax.
Yeah.
And that's how the facility is able to not have to pay the fair market value of property tax because it is a piece of public land that is in a short term lease. So for fine, purely financial reasons, that's why we do a year to year lease.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, it's not where we pay, you know, let's do a 10 year lease, but for those reasons. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll open public comment.
We have just the one speaker at this time, Ron Kirkish.
Okay. Oh, I think he, is this, yeah, I think it's set up over here, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff and community. One of my favorite movies is Field of Dreams. And the question was asked. Is this heaven? And the answer, I'm going to change the answer. I'm going to say, no, it's Gilroy Gardens. That's what we are giving to the kids that come to our city. A good experience, an experience that they will remember for a lifetime. I grew up in a piece of heaven myself. I lived in Pacific Grove back in 1955 when I was eight. I lived about four houses on Grand Avenue from the beach. I visited the beach. My first job was at the beach. A gentleman who ran the swimming pool, the cold saltwater swimming pool, came up to me and said, you're here every day. How would you like to clean, help me clean up the beach? And I'll give you a free pass to go swimming. And that's what I did. So I learned. And that's what Gilroy Gardens is offering our community, our kids. Over 600 jobs are available to our kids every year. That's what we are offering and what we should continue to offer. It's the largest employer in our city. We can't give that up. We can't give up a little heaven, piece of heaven for our kids too. I worked as a docent out there. Paul Klecker grabbed an ink and said, you got to come out here. So I did. And I couldn't believe how beautiful those kids were. To know that someday I'll be gone, but they'll be here and they'll be the leaders in our communities. And that's the experience that they're going to have. I remember the glass bottom boat still fishing out there on the cement pier, throwing rocks, looking for crabs. Their memories will be having fun at Gilroy Gardens for the rest of their life. That'll be etched in their memory. So I hope in the future, we'll always remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, Greg Thelios?
Good evening. I work at Gil, I work at Gilroy Gardens. I retired, I, I worked at Palo Alto Medical Clinic for over 28, nine years. When I retired, after a couple of months, my wife says, you get antsy. Why don't you go next door and see the Gilroy Gardens? We live in Eagle Ridge. I said, go next door and see if they need you over there. And they put me to work. Eh, I was going to stay for a year or two. This is my eighth season. And I'll tell you why I stayed there, because it's great to work there. And not only are we, are these people that we work with, we all work together very well. The administration, I'm, I'm, I'm the lowest man in, in the works there. I'm the lowest in the throne bowl. And they still treat you wonderfully. The administration is good to all the workers. Let me tell you what, we talk about how, oh, you know, we're, we're, this is good for the kids. You know what it's good for? For the, for those that work there, they enjoy working there. You're going to see some smiles there, you're going to see happy people.